Could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
They'll move.
Yes.
Second.
All right, so Devin Mora, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So, we have a really meaty, I'm looking forward to it, presentation about the curriculum instruction planning, but first we have an opportunity for comments from members of the community. If you'd like to step up to the mic in the back and just share your name, and we ask that you keep your comments or questions under your mask.
Good evening, my name is Yesena Sorreal. I have a good evening. I cannot stay too long, so I would like to ask a question now, if possible, because I see that this is about curriculum development. My question is regarding with early language instruction. I've heard some good news that Erin shared with us with regards to the recommendation of the World Language Committee, and I was wondering if the administration was also envisioning something for the next year in the development of the curriculum potentially, or if we can somehow hear soon about what the recommendations, having already publicly announced, when the administration would decide whether there's a budget or not for the early rolling language instruction. Thank you.
So, good evening. Yes, so at the last meeting, and you can circle back and see the video, Mr. Graber gave an update about some conversations that have happened in the board's curriculum committee meeting, which was an update of our ongoing work, that we are reviewing a couple different models at this point in time, and we would suspect that as we move through the course of this year, that there will be reference to it in some informal sense in these meetings, such as a report from Dr. Core, and that we would suspect that there would be conversation that would take place during the budget process in the winter where a formal proposal may be made.
And just to re, a reminder that what Mr. Graber shared was that there was a committee that involved Dr. Core and teachers from Dowslane Main Street School and the department head in secondary, and that they've explored several different models, immersion, flex, and flex. Immersion was seen to be not viable at this time, so I think when we come back, it will be a discussion about those two other models.
Thank you. So you said in winter, correct? We can hopefully think about it.
I would suspect that there may be some updates through the winter from reports from Dr. Core, but more formally, something that would happen in budget process?
Okay. Okay, I didn't think we had any more updates. I mean, at this point, I thought we were going to actually do it through budget process. So I just want to clarify, just so that we're saying the same. Is that what you meant?
Of course.
That through budget pro, in other words, the proposal is there.
A formal proposal, yes.
I think you have a draft document that we could share in the near future.
Right.
Yeah.
An overview document, yes.
Thank you. We're on the same page.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Harrison to give us a little setup for our presentation.
Yeah, so when we step back and we think about so much of the work that we referenced throughout the course of the year, there's, we touched on a lot of individual items, and we do so in isolation, but at the same time, we hear lots of reference about building a K-12 system, the alignment of work, and the programs that we have built, but as we do this, and we go through this planning process, we're always looking to the future and identifying what our focus and our next steps are in this body of work that encompasses curriculum and instruction and all of our student learning experiences. And we're tremendously proud of the work that we've done over the past six and a half years, and really advanced our district in so many areas, and just going back last month, Dr. Core and Mr. Lubinski highlighted the work in the area of technology and project Lead the Way. So tonight is an opportunity for Dr. Core, really, to show the work that she's leading K-12, and foreshadowing with different areas of focus that are going to be occurring and things that are underway, and it's impossible to be able to touch on every single aspect of all the important work that's occurring, but tonight, there's going to be a number of critical highlights that you're going to see, K through 12, advancement of our curriculum and student learning experiences, and a window into how we're beginning to monitor and evaluate some of that work with the first phases of our program assessment model that Dr. Core presented back in the spring. So with that said, Dr. Core?
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you. I think I'll just hang my hat for a second on that idea of how much can you share? How do you present and share all that's going on in our district, K through 12? So there are a lot of moving parts, so I think tonight, what I'm going to try and do is highlight for you some of the key areas of focus. It doesn't mean there may not be some other pieces that I could have shared, but somewhere along the way, I had to make a decision about what to provide tonight, and what would give you at least an overview of where the focus of the work is for this year. So, you know, I had created a document a couple of, several years ago now, and I updated it last year, and that was my starting point as I planned for this evening. And it's funny, as I read it, I thought, wow, this is really vague. Hmm. So, and I thought a lot about that, and I thought, so why is it vague? So I want to also frame for you what, from my perspective, are the things we can project, and what are the things that we're building on? And so we have the vision for it, but it's going to evolve over time, and I wish I had the answers. I wish I had a crystal ball that could say to you, in four years, or in three years, or in one year, in seven years, this is what we'll be, this is what we'll have, this. I don't have that ability, so I try my best to create a vision and to build the capacity of our teachers and grow our students in a way that feels like it is meeting the goals of our district. So with that, I, all we, now you'll, I think you see, we start each presentation with our strategic objectives, because these are, these are the guiding principles. This is the guiding force behind what we're doing and what we're focusing on as a district. And so through this lens, we plan and we move forward. Sitting under the strategic objectives, which are at the district level, are the theories of action and goals, and our theories of action are focused, our theory of action is focused on our students and what we're really looking for our students to know and be able to do as they move through. So maybe it feels a little closer when we think about our juniors and our seniors, you know, getting ready to move on to that next place in life, but when I walk into classrooms and I look at our kindergartners and our first graders, just this morning, I was walking down the hall at Dowslane at the beginning of the day, and they were all lined up in the hallway, and their level of engagement, and they were talking, and they were talking about different things, and I thought to myself, how do we really know? How do we really know in, by the time these five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds are going to be leaving our school district and moving on, going to college, what is it really going to look like? So all we can do is set a vision, and know what we believe in, and stick to what we believe in, and make sure that we're being mindful of the world around us, and that we're inserting these experiences for our students. So we have a goal, and we've been working on this goal, and our goal speaks to the learning experiences that our students are having, ensuring that we have a comprehensive curriculum, and when I say that, it means it's a curriculum that everybody who's responsible in a grade level, in a course, in a subject area, understands that these are our goals, and we are working towards something in common. Our aligned and articulated content is becoming more and more articulated through Rubicon, but there's definitely places that we can grow in that area. We have gotten stronger at defining our learning outcomes, and we are trying, our work this year, and started last year, but continuing in around assessment. How do we know? What is the evidence of the learning? What is the evidence of the goals that we are setting out?
Could I just, quick question, Zach, can you define articulated a little bit for the general audience?
Articulated, there's generally, when we speak about in built-in schools, we talk about vertical articulation, and we talk about horizontal articulation. Horizontal says that every teacher in the third grades, third grade, the teacher knows and understands the curriculum, and no matter whose classroom your child is in, your child is getting the same curriculum. That is a well-articulated curriculum. It's the art and science, though, so the art is who that individual teacher is, the gifts they bring, their passions, their beliefs. We never want to take away the art of teaching, but we want to ensure that there's a curriculum that no matter who and where you are, you are ensured that you are getting and exposed to that curriculum. Vertical articulation is when we start to look at from one grade to the next. What is the path of learning that happens from K to one to two to three and so on? So when we think about our work, we think about curriculum. So you'll notice there, I put in parentheses, stage one, because I am always trying to connect your, your understanding of our work back to our unit planning. So unit planning, stage one, are the desired results. What is the curriculum? So I've just defined it here so that we have a common understanding of what, when we use the word curriculum, what are we actually talking about? The next level, I'm controlling myself not to get up and fix that R. The next level is the curriculum developed and reviewed. So I want to stop on this for a minute. You know, in many school districts, as well as here in Irvington, for years, we had a system, a curriculum review system, where we would have a cycle, and so every three years, or every five years, you would go back and we would review the K-12 social studies curriculum, and you created a cycle. So let's say in two, in 2018, 19, you were reviewing social studies, and then that went back into its cycle, and then in 2019, 20, you did science, and in 2021, you did math. But the problem with that system is that, the problem with that system is that our elementary teachers teach all the subject areas. So our elementary teachers were in curriculum review every single year. So if I'm a secondary social studies teacher, it's fine. Every four, three years, whatever that cycle is, I go into review, we have a system for looking at it. I also think that New York State has created a game changer for us in that they are just changing the standards, and you can't live in that cycle anymore. So we are living in a, what I would call, an ongoing cycle. So I think I shared at the last meeting that in ELA, they rolled out the new standards. Well, now they've rolled out revised standards. We're just embedding them as we go. We're not stopping everything and saying, okay, let's stop, let's review, let's change everything, rather, we're saying, let's get the, we're working on our next unit, we're working on a narrative unit, let's check those standards, let's get those standards in, and let's make the revision to the units of study. So the concept of curriculum review has changed significantly for us, and I would say we're in an ongoing review of where we are, what we're doing, and the constant alignment with the New York State standards. Stage three is the planning, is the instruction. So if stage one is the curriculum, and stage two is assessment, stage three is actually what goes on in your child's classroom. It's the planning the teacher does, it's the organ, it's the strategies the teacher uses, it's the groupings the teacher creates, it's the decisions that the individual teacher makes each day around how they're ultimately going to work toward those student-learner outcomes that we have defined. We are working toward this concept of a balanced assessment system, and so stage two is where we assess for everything that we are teaching. We are working toward this, using more pre-assessment, formative assessment, and summative assessment. So it's the, these three areas that drive all of our work in the curriculum planning. It is the instructional design practices that define what an individual teacher and a collective group of teachers are going to do in order to ensure that the curriculum is being delivered. So a well-developed unit of study considers the alignment of each component using assessment as the guiding principle. The key there is this last part of that sentence, in a cyclical process of instructional design. So our goals as a school district are to say, you have designed a unit of study, that unit of study is not done. That unit of study is a living document that you change as you deliver that unit. So if you deliver that unit, you are always assessing, how did it go? What went well? What did I see that my students understand? So you're going to hear me talking a little bit later about PLTW, and one of our upcoming challenges will be to say, well, wait a minute, if we have K-2 PLTW, how does that change what they're going to be teaching in 3-5? How does that change PLTW-6-8? Because if we're providing students with an earlier experience, then it should shift what we're doing as we grow. So that first bullet is in recognition of while we're going to develop really good, strong units of study, we always have to be going back in to say, is our instructional design what it needs to be? Are we meeting our goals? It is the decision of each teacher to select and apply the instructional practices. So if we have a coherent, well-articulated curriculum, then our teachers should have, should be provided with, or have, the skills and the knowledge and the thinking to decide, how do I design my instruction in any given moment, in any given unit, or, and over the course of the year? We use the Danielson framework as our evaluation system. So when we observe a teacher, we're using the Danielson framework for teaching. It's how we assess our teachers. There are four domains, planning and preparation, classroom environment, instruction, and professional responsibility. I'm just going to, it's now actually just reflection. So not only are we asking our teachers to create units through a unit planner, we're saying, as a school district, we have a way to evaluate that instruction in our classrooms when our administrators go in and observe. Lastly, I would say that the expectations for technology have shifted significantly, and so our instructional design practices are also moving on a continuum of figuring out, where does the, where does the technology make sense? Where does the instructional technology actually change instruction, enhance instruction, or replace instruction? And I'll talk a little bit about that tonight when we talk about Amplify and Science. So for 2018, 19, I actually, this just could have gone on and on, but I really tried to capture some overarching ideas about areas of focus. That is a really long list. How many school days do we have? Hundred and eighty? Especially if there's not a lot of stuff? Hundred and eighty. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of goals. We have a lot of competing interests. We have a lot of demands, demands on students, demands on teachers. So I share these with you, and I want to highlight some pieces around them, but this is a very long list. The one thing that I think we're most proud of here in Irvington with this long list is we are sticking to it. There's no new, you know, idea, you know, sometimes school districts will talk about, you know, the idea de jour, where a new idea comes out, let's try that, let's insert that. Wait a minute, why don't we see if anyone's interested in doing that? We don't want to be that. We want to be, we want to be clear, we want to be thoughtful, we want to be focused, and we want to have very clear goals that we're working toward. The first bullet is the pilot, our pilot for a plan for regularly scheduled release time for all teachers K-12. Our PLRD release days are really the umbrella for a lot of making these, every bullet underneath, happen. So I think if we add up the hours, ten? Ten. So I, I share that with you because I just want to give you perspective of the level of work we're doing, the level of work we're expecting, but also the number of ideas and topics we're building on and building capacity around. I will say already, our PLRD time is, I hear people saying it, oh, maybe we could use PLRD for that, maybe we could use it for that. That's what we want. We want people to be saying, oh, we have that hour, let's, we can get it done in that hour. So we are already seeing what I would call some of the engagement in those, in that time, in a way that we would have hoped. So as you can see from these bullets, and I won't read them to you, but the whole idea behind them is they reflect professional development, they reflect unit design, they reflect our understanding by design focus and our four learning goals, our work with Google applications and our Google, expansion of Google, especially in our classrooms through Google Classroom, RTI, the inclusion of technology, our broad approach now to making sure that we're thinking thoughtfully about assessment, using data, and using it to inform instruction, and also looking at our standardized test data to guide our planning for instruction, and, and the relationship between standardized data and our school-wide data. So this is a lot, but I will share also comfortably that there is a lot of interconnectedness from one to the other. So these are the areas of focus for 2018, 19. So I'm going to, I thought it might be helpful to take a, sort of a walk through a little bit of some of the elementary work, as well as the secondary work. So at the elementary level, we are continuing to develop and build out our curriculum in almost all of our curriculum areas, in the sense that all of our teachers are working on their unit planners. There are some areas that we have a stronger focus than others, so clearly, science this year is a strong focus, but also in making sure that we're infusing the new ELA and math standards in our unit planners. I would say if I had to put, say, something is on a back burner, it's not that we're not engaging with it, we're just continuing with our existing units in social studies, and we're not right now in what I would call a development phase in social studies, even though, honestly, we need to be. But we, we're at capacity for how much development we can do in any given year right now. All of our special area teachers are, continue to develop their units and build out, in some cases, Dowslane art, we have a brand-new art teacher, so she's developing, and I would say certainly a different way than possibly our music teacher who's been in, in district for quite a few years at this point. So I, there is some individual shifts in, from one subject area to the next. For instruction, we're focusing very strongly on ELA practices and our workshop model in our classrooms, and there's been, continues to be expansion with learning stations, and the reason why that's so important is the premise behind learning stations is high levels of engagement of students. Students working through systems that build self-reliance, that speak to all of those early attributes in our goals and theories of action, so communication, collaboration. So that's where that happens. If we have all of our students in rows, then we're not giving them the experience in building their capacity around those attributes that we think are so important for our students to have. I agree. Assessment, we are continuing to align our unit assessments, but we have also this year started our year with a broad training for all of our teachers in Fontis and Pennell, and really ensuring that the assessment skills are there for all teachers, and that we are implementing our benchmark assessments at a high level, and with a lot of consistency. So if I am a teacher, and I do a running record on a student, and now I send that student to the next grade level, we want our teachers to have confidence in each other that when I, when Reina sat with that student and performed that diagnostic on that student, Reina's skill set as the teacher was strong, and she knew what she was doing, so that when I get that running record the following year, I trust it. I can start my year saying, I know where, I know where Suzie is as a reader, and I can hit the ground running. So having some consistency and confidence is a huge factor when it comes to assessment. I share this with you, and this is just a model of what the New York, what, sorry, well, I'm going to say the Next Gen Science Standards, but we know we call them the New York State Science Learning Standards. Just a little bit ironic. So the Next Gen Standards, Next Gen Science Standards was what was out there across the country, but New York State, they chose to change the name to the New York State Science Learning Standards. Our ELA and math standards, they've now changed the name to the Next Gen ELA and Math Standards. It's insane. It is insane. Just call them all Next Gen. It would be so much easier for everybody. So, this comes from the Next Gen Science Standards, but it is the New York version of it. Couple of things worth noting. This is what's called 3D teaching. So every unit of study is steeped in the premise of these performance standards, so at the top, students who demonstrate understanding can, this is K through 12, this is what the standards look like, from the format to the structure. They all embed science and engineering practices, that is not a separate strand, it is part and parcel of every unit of study. They embed the core ideas, the disciplinary core ideas, and then the cross-cutting concepts. So you know all that work we started as a school district four or five years ago around big ideas and transfer, and this whole idea of essential questions? Because we want kids to connect their curriculums from one classroom to the next, to the next, when they're at the secondary level. Interdisciplinary, in theory, that's really what the Next Gen Science Standards also were steeped in, is cross-cutting, that we, our kids tend to see, especially at the secondary level, they see the sciences as very discreet. I'm in bio right now, I'm in chem right now, I'm in physics right now. The whole premise of this is to give our students the opportunity to see how the sciences overlap, and there is a connectedness, and that engine, science and engineering practices are part and parcel of every unit. In addition, at the bottom of the chart that you're seeing there, they also cross-reference to the other, to the ELA standards and the math standards, so that as our teachers are embedding these units of study, they are also have, just as a quick reference, what other standards align or can be embedded as part of this work in science. So, what's our approach? So we are not Next Gen or New York State Science-aligned because they just adopted the standards. As you know, our focus or our implementation of a unit at every grade level has begun with Amplify, and we chose to do earth science, and we did because most of our grade levels did not have an earth science unit, and it is part of the new standards. So we could have looked at each grade level and picked a different area, so I just want to highlight for you on this previous slide, the different sciences, earth science and space, life science and physical science. So those are going to be the three areas. So for us, we felt like it was actually important to take a strand, rather than say, well, first grade could maybe do a life science, and third grade could maybe do an earth science, and we thought that this was important for the articulation and the assessment of the program. So as you can see, these are the units that we are implementing at the K-5 level this year. I am excited that Christine Rosner, our math coach, is helping to support the implementation of these units, and I think it speaks to that whole premise of the bottom of that chart, where they are embedding those math standards as part of the work. So again, having Christine, who's been such an amazing resource for our teachers in mathematics, also now helping make some of the connections in science, speaks exactly to what these new standards are asking us to do as a district. So I think we're, we're lucky. We're lucky to have someone like Christine and to have that role here in the district. So last year, Dr. Harrison referred to our program assessment system, so we're trying it out. We're taking this structure that we think could work, and we're going to play it out and see how does it work for us. So here's the action plan for the program assessment for Amplify. Program is Amplify Science Units of Study. Our goal is to provide high-quality science instruction that meets the New York standards. It's not to implement Amplify, it's to say, what are our, or what are our instructional goals, and can Amplify meet that through their pre-design, through their designed curriculum? So for this year, our approach was to select those, to select the standards aligned with K through 5. Our implementation is to introduce and pilot Amplify Earth Science Units of Study grades K through 5. We purchased the units, we're training our teachers. We purchased the units, we're training our teachers, and in February, we will have implemented one unit at every grade. The committee will reconvene, and we will, through feedback from teachers, students, and the assessments given as part of the Amplify unit of study, we will go back, we will look at the standards, we will say, "Did we meet the goals and the expectations?" So, here's a good example of, "I wish that I could tell you what the next step would be, but that's not how I do business, because for me, without the feedback from that committee and the work of teachers and students, I don't know what the next level of implementation will be yet, but I do know, or I can vision, what the next step-around approach would be." So, I'm assuming right now that we're gonna like Amplify, that we're gonna think it meets our goals. Should that be the case, then we have that committee ready to go in February to start that conversation. But I wanna share what turned out to be a little bit of a conundrum for us. So, because we needed to be in budget cycle, we needed to implement these units of study early in the year. Well, maybe the units of study that we selected were maybe good for November and December, maybe January, but maybe some of them would have more ideally been implemented in May, developmentally, for that particular grade of students. So, sometimes when you implement something like this, you have to understand that there are some variables that you can't, that you can control, and variables that you can't control. So, when we reconvene, we're gonna have to pull that apart a little bit to say, "What are some of those variables that may be influenced the way that implementation went?" But what can we take away from this that would say, "Yes, we think the data tell us that we're aligned, that this unit did meet those learner outcomes," and what are the, what are the viable next steps? So, our vision then for going forward would be to assess the current curriculum, including PLTW, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that as well. We're gonna define our curriculum needs. So, now is where we might say, "Let's keep the Earth Science, but you know what? Second grade doesn't need a Life Science unit. They already have a good Life Science unit. It's functioning. Maybe we'll make a couple of tweaks to it. It meets, and we can meet the standards." So, maybe we'll decide to not do a Life Science unit in second grade, maybe instead, we'll shift, and we'll go back and look at the standards, and maybe we'll say, "We're going to do a Physical Science," or we're going to do a spa, there's a Space Science unit. So, I would imagine that if we move into another year of Amplify, we would be assessing grade by grade for need, not only just saying, "Let's do a strand, hook, line, and sinker." That may not make sense. We would select a phase and process to ensure that all standards are being met, meaning aligning with PLTW, and where are we meeting those standards, and then training teachers in the additional units of study. Once we have that February meeting, and we can sort of begin to start to look at the approach, then that next phase would be by June, I would be able to provide the, sort of complete the path for 19, 20, hopefully in time for bud, right? That's the, that's kind of the path. Budget, we meet, the committee convenes in February, now we're ready for March to be able to say, "Okay, here's what we're recommending for the budget, and to the Board of Education."
All right. Answered my question already?
I appreciate your patience. So, PLTW, so these are the units of study that we are implementing in Project Lead the Way. We implement a engineering unit and a computer science unit. That computer science is our commitment that we made four years ago, that we wanted to have a computer science strand K through 12. So, we have started these units. It's been interesting at the, at the K2 level. Fun, you walk in, and the kids are enjoying themselves, and I happened to be in there the other day, and one of the things that the teacher is doing is, even though it's not part of PLTW, she's using Flipgrid. So, some of you, two, a few weeks ago, heard Jessie talk about Flipgrid, so that's an infusion of technology. PLTW doesn't ask for it, but she wanted to have a way to have the kids assess them and assess their knowledge, so using Flipgrid. So, she hands out the iPads, and she gives the kids maybe, I don't know, like, two directions, and the kids are working in groups, and they are off and running. And she turns around, she said, "Oh, my God, I didn't even know you could do that with Flipgrid." And that's the reality. Our kids, they push, they click, they touch, they're not afraid. They're not afraid to figure out, "How do I use this tool?" And so, what we're seeing is, we're, we're seeing how they're exploring and taking what we're doing to another level. So, this is very early. She is in the middle of the first unit right now, which is the engineering unit. So, here's where we're going, and again, this is our fifth, second year for fifth grade, and our first year for K1 and 2. So, what is our program assessment for Project Lead the Way?
To clarify, it's, it's one unit of study of the LTW for the year?
No, two.
So, it is one in the fall, and one in the spring?
Well, it's not as clean as that.
I have to, they're.
So, program assessment, so looking at our K2, so our program is K2, Project Lead the Way. So, what was our goal? To create the foundational knowledge, skills, and thinking of STEM to support individual growth and interest of students. So, one of our beliefs about STEM right from the beginning was, we have a program at our high school, how are we providing that feeder? How are we giving kids experiences so that when they get to the high school, they are ready, if should they choose, to engage in STEM-based courses of study? So, we are starting this foundational knowledge right from the very, from early on. So, if you look across this year, our approach, well, we increased our staffing by a teacher, because in order to implement K2, we needed more staffing. We provided the required training, and we aligned the K2 launch units with the New York State standards. In other words, looking at where those standards are going to meet, some, where those units are going to meet some of those standards. Again, when we meet in February, we'll be fleshing that out even more. We have a plan for implementation, and our plan for the results. We're gonna be looking at our student assessments, feedback from classroom teachers. So, one of the things that's really, I think fabulous about the way that we're implementing is the classroom teacher is in with the students. So, in addition to Amplify, our students are getting a sci, with their teacher, are getting their other science unit through Project Lead the Way, and the classroom teacher is there. So, when we have our students working in their, in their launch logs, they're called, the classroom teacher is there, and also supporting, supporting students in that classroom, but also making connections. Here's what we're doing in our class, they're helping them as writers. So, we want that over, we want that cross-disciplinary, and by having the classroom teacher as part of that experience, we are more likely to ensure that. So, in this case, because we have other Project Lead the Way in place, it was a little easier to look out. We're not really testing the waters, the way we are with Amplify, with Project Lead the Way K2. We're actually two years behind where, where we thought we would be in implementing Project Lead the Way K2. So, we will continue to assess the units, the choices we're making, but our goal would be to, more importantly, begin to identify the necessary shifts, because our students are walking in with foundational knowledge. So, now in third grade, when Ms. Carney gets the students who had PLTW in second grade, they're gonna come in knowing what the design process is. So, right now, Ms. Carney has been spending the beginning, her introductory unit in, in the fall, is a lot about teaching the design process and that cycle, but now our students are going to already have that. So, for us next year, it's gonna be important that we're beginning to articulate what those shifts are. So, in English Language Arts, we continue the use, I shared with you the use of the Common Assessment, Fontis and Pennell renewed commitment to workshop model, and ensuring that our students are growing as readers, as individuals, that we're differentiating our instruction, and that we're redesigning our assessments to align. But I wanna share with you something that I think is such a, an amazing window in to the kind of work that's going on around, with the work of our ELA coach. This is similar work, by the way, that Christine Rosner does with math. So, I'm gonna share with you four or five slides taken from Nancy Deacon's learning session with fourth-grade teachers. There is, there were a lot of other slides, so I picked carefully to hopefully give you a window in to what the work is across the year and across different grade levels. So, the learning session is a three-hour learning session, where Nancy embeds assessment, new instruction, and unit planning altogether. So, in this opening slide, she says, "Why are we engaging in this work throughout the year?" Why? Because we wanna have an approach to systematic use of data and analysis of student work to foster a deep and meaningful discussion about teaching and learning. So, this is where our teachers are in the room altogether, and they are looking and understanding assessment. Christine Rosner does it not only with state assessment, she does it with math module assessment, units. For this learning session, Nancy had done some analysis of the New York State assessment, and she is now worked, she worked with the fourth-grade teachers to understand that data. So, why have we made this time commitment? We believe in building in the time to foster the learning community, support our commitment to each other as colleagues, and facilitate collaboration that is focused and ongoing. In other words, if we really wanna grow as a district, and grow our students in their ability and their capacity as, as learners of the, of English Language Arts, we need to engage in professional dialogue on an ongoing basis. So, this slide sets the stage for the work. So, here's a sample. So, what Nancy did was looking at the Grade 4 2018 New York State ELA. So, first she starts by looking at the standards. So, reading informational, reading informational, RI, and literary. So, these are the two different that actually for New York State are now merged. So, what Nancy does with the teachers is, she says, "Take a close look at the following questions." They literally go, and they analyze the questions that are on the assessment. After that, she spends time with the teachers, looking at the fourth-grade ELA skill rates across the years. So, Nancy did a longitudinal study with them, or shared longitudinal data with them, so that we could look at how we perform across fourth grade over the years. So, now, let's not talk cohort, oh, that's a really strong cohort. That's a cohort that struggles a little bit more. We're not talking cohort here. So, on the, this slide, she's talking that test, that individual, and those groups. But then she broadens it to say, "What does this look like longitudinally? Let's look at fourth grade, let's look at third grade." She then goes deeper into the constructed response, the rubrics themselves, to say, "So, what are the, what are we assessing for? What are the state assessments looking for when our kids engage in the constructed response questions on that state assessment?" So, now what? So, after she unpacks all this data with them, so now what? So, through this, they actually surface some pretty interesting instructional gaps, and it's not because of the way that our teachers weren't doing it. They discovered it's because of the way we've been teaching it, is what we're thinking now. So, why are students consistently scoring lower on the constructed response questions? So, now they're having a conversation about that. What can we do differently? How do we work smarter, not harder? So, these are the questions. And then through this, Nancy shifts to the, looking at the unit planner. So, how, do our unit planners align? Are the standards in there correctly and accurately? Are the goals in there curricular, correct, correctly and accurately? Are we teaching what's in the planner? So, are we writing an awesome planner, but then going back and teaching what we always did, because we, 'cause that's what's human nature? Are we, or aren't we? So, now they're looking at their unit planner against this to say, "Wait a minute. It turns out, we haven't really been teaching that standard." So, this is that alignment moment. This is where that unit planner says, "Wait a minute. No wonder we're falling apart on that one. We're not teaching it." Or, "We're not teaching it explicitly enough." So, she shifts to say, "So, now let's look at how we're planning for it." And then ultimately, how do we support students in writing about reading? Because if our constructed responses are not adequate, then why not? So, using those rubrics, creating the checklist, so now she goes into some clear strategies about what we could be doing in our classrooms to change what we're seeing in our, in our data. So, the last piece that, that links then to that is then supporting the success of the constructed response. We need to develop the routines around not only jotting, but writing longer. So, through this, they assess it, and she links it, and she links it back to work that they had, that they have done prior to this meeting, that they can now build on, because this was work that fourth grade had worked on in the spring, pulling it back in, saying, "Wait a minute. We've done this work. Make sure it's front and present. Make sure it's in your classroom plan to do this work." So, I felt like this gave you such a nice window into the level of work, and the capacity around, yeah, and the capacity by having somebody who is really leading this work. And we can connect it back later, but I think it's gonna be a good conversation for us as we move forward around this whole idea of data. To me, I share this with you, is, these are the kinds of people who need to be doing the work. It's not someone, we need someone who can access the data and create a report for us, but her deep knowledge of ELA is what's really moving this work forward. So, we need the data, but we need the professional who's at the table, who has the work to create something like that, analyze the data, and then support the teachers in actually implementing what we learn.
Fantastic.
Thank you. I know, she's awesome. She's awesome. And Christine does very similar work, and I feel like I've shown some of her work in the past, so I thought I'd highlight Nancy tonight. Continued work in mathematics, so again, Christine Rosner, at the elementary level, continues the coaching in the classroom, the expansion, obviously linking some of her time now to the science work, on the continued data analysis, also of both our state data and our ongoing classroom data. So, the secondary. So, the secondary always looks a little bit different. One of the things, I just wanna, so, at the secondary level, we continue to build out curriculum instruction and assessment in all of our key areas. We are providing a ton of support and professional learning, more common for years and years and years at the elementary level. I would say at the, in the middle school, there's been a ton of, there's been a lot of PD over the years. I would say our PD now is so incredibly, it's cohesive. It is 612. Everything we're doing is 612, and I would say in the past, that wasn't the case. There were some pockets of really nice instruction and, and support in a professional learning way, but it was more pockets. So, again, the same way, we're trying to build something clearly and cohesively around what our students are experiencing. We wanna make sure we're doing that for our teachers as well. I wanted to share with you, give you a window in a little bit to social studies. This June 2019 is the first year for the new Social Studies Assessment, Global History and Geography 2. And so, the design of the New York State K12 Social Studies Framework directly supports practitioners in making the shift. What I want you to take away from tonight is, these shifts are across the board. When I share with you that science grid, and what the science standards look like, it's the same idea. It's bigger ideas. It's more global. It is conceptual understanding. It is deeper thinking. We were ahead of, of the curve. When we started talking seven years ago about teaching thinking, and the importance of teaching thinking, it was before all of these shifts started to happen. So, there is no question, if you look at our goals and our theories of action, our strategic objectives, they are all about building the capacity of our students to be working and thinking at a much higher level. So, the new assessment is broader, it's less fact-based. We are gonna see the same thing in the science. I'm gonna share with you the science rollout. So, the framework can take many forms, there's no one approach, but the whole idea is to ensure that our teachers have, develop, are developing a repertoire of instructional methods and strategies, knowing that these are the goals, these are the shifts, and our teachers are working with, we have consultants that are here and working closely with our teachers as they develop the work. One of the things that, especially in science and social studies, when we bring in consultants, we have been very lucky to have people who are very connected at the state level, so at, again, especially at the high school, where they're able to inform our high school teachers about these shifts, and what they're gonna look like, and, you know, that's important. And we could argue maybe some other night about regents, and, and how it drives our courses, and for me, I wish the regents would go away, we're the only state that has it. I mean, there's so many reasons that I wish we didn't have the regents, most of all because it puts a lot of pressure on our teachers, and it sometimes keeps them teaching things that honestly, I don't believe are really what, what they would, they would wanna teach, or you would want them to, to spend time teaching on. But when there's an assessment, that's an end game, it, it drives it. And, so, I- And so I think there's just some realities to secondary life in certain areas. So the focus of this new assessment is this ECA, this Domain Analysis, Domain Model and Framework. So what basically we're saying, it's about claims and evidence. Well, you know what? That's similar to words and language we hear in science. There is more and more overlap of the language and the claim and evidence we hear in English. There's more and more evidence of the crossover of the language and the kinds of thinking that we're asking our students to do across the different courses. So for the new science standards, here's the implementation timeline. In 2022, they are going to introduce the new 5th and 8th grade assessment. In 2023, life science, biology and earth and space science, and in 2024, physical science, chemistry, physical science, physics. So here we go. I'm a chemistry teacher. You're saying, "Reina, you're telling me that I need to change everything I'm doing because the way that I'm teaching right now doesn't look like this. It looks like the current curriculum. It looks like the current assessment. But you're telling me I need to get ready and I need to be teaching in a 3D model. This is not insurmountable. I think good teaching leads to good scores. I don't think you have to teach exactly to the standards. But I'm also not naive. These regions do ask for some facts and information that literally we drill into kids' heads." So I share this with you, not to say we're not doing it. Our science teachers, they are like on fire. You know, our middle school science teachers just presented their work on exactly how they're shifting. But I share it because I want you to understand the dilemma, and I want you to have a sense of the challenge for teachers in, "How do I live in both worlds when New York State gives me a timeline that says my course is not going to be assessed differently for four more years?" So we're doing it, and we're working at it, and we're going to find the balance, and some of it is that shift in the five mandated regions and trying to reduce some of the regions we give, so that the regions aren't what drives us. But it's important that you see the world that we live in. This is the same for social studies, by the way, that they're going to change the US history regions when it's not there yet. So just an example of what we're doing, but also some of the challenges we face. So at middle school, we're also rolling out our Amplify units. We have a 6th, a 7th, and an 8th grade unit. That 8th grade unit is actually in the earth science classroom, not in the 8th grade science. I think you know we have a lead replacement in that, in science for the year. So certainly Karen Bodnar, who is a lead teacher in our program, no matter what she teaches, and so it made more sense for us to pilot and get feedback from her, and give her the experience, and it certainly was a unit that could fit right in. So, middle school PLTW program assessment, I should have reversed these. So I'm going to skip, and I'll come back to the Amplify. My slides are out of order, I just realized. So, PLTW. So we have increased our PLTW, let me not do that, let me stick with Amplify. Okay. So our program assessment for Amplify. So what are we assessing? Well, there's the challenge. We're assessing two things. As you know, it's going to be the first time in district that we have a one-on-one curriculum. I guess I have that interesting tonight. So...
I agree. It's like, how do you follow up those last four slides a few minutes ago? That was powerful.
Maybe, we'll see when the questions happen. So here's the thing, and here's the exciting thing. So we are implementing Amplify at middle level. It is an online one-on-one curriculum. It is going to let us assess a one-to-one model. It's going to let us assess, how does it look to have a true online curriculum?
Please kind of have one up.
Yeah, I am. So we have two different people who will be, there's a lot of it, but two people whose main focus will be involved in program assessment. So Jesse Lubinski is the Director of Technology, because through this model, we are piloting with each student walking into the classroom and being handed a Chromebook in order to engage in the curriculum. So Jesse is looking at it like, "How do I evaluate this one-to-one model? How do I know if this is the right thing? Is it right to have a class set of Chromebooks so that when a student walks in, they get handed a Chromebook? Or should we be looking at a one-to-one model at the middle level where every middle school kid has their own Chromebook, so that when they walk into the classroom, whether it be science or something else, they're ready to go?" So that's one angle for Amplify. But then the other angle for Amplify is the actual Amplify curriculum. So here's a place where our secondary instructional coach for her data project is actually going to be assessing and looking at Amplify. So Sarah's going to be looking at quantitative and qualitative data around the Amplify Science Program. She's going to, the quantitative will be the student scores on pre-assessment and post-assessments for each of the units, and the alignment of those with the science standards. In addition, Sarah's going to be tracking how long the unit takes. So that may seem like mundane data, but that is huge. So if Amplify says this unit is 22 days, well, if it takes 44 days, wow, like that's really something we need to be examining as part of our decision-making process of, "How many units can you do? Did it take 44 days because you did it for the first time? And maybe in the future, it'll take 34 days." But that's really important data. So Sarah collecting this data for and with the teachers is helpful. Her qualitative assessment, qualitative data is going to be student perceptions of Amplify and teachers' perceptions. So Sarah is going to be working to ensure that we have some qualitative data as well, so the engagement of students in Amplify, as well as the teachers' thinking and ideas behind it, and how that informs us moving forward. So when we look at our program assessment, you can see that we are looking for, to see if this kind of science curriculum, in other words, a one-to-one model, an online curriculum, does it do what we expect technology to do? So that idea of engaging, is it transformative? Does it provide data? And is it inquiry and evidence-based? So we are going into this with very clear, defined goals of what it is we're looking for and what is going to inform our thinking. So linked again to Amplify is this idea of PLTW. So with PLTW, we now have three electives that are available for 8th graders, and these students can opt in, they would opt into this instead of a study hall. And right now, we have about, I want to make sure I have this. So right now, we have, there are 47 students that are signed up across the year for these three courses. We are, these are Project Lead the Way courses. Energy and the Environment is being taught by a science teacher, and Computer Science for Innovators and Makers and Green Architecture are being taught by a technology teacher. So when we look at our program assessment for Project Lead the Way and our goals, so with the program, or the specialization courses, that's what those are called, and our goal is to expand STEM-based opportunities for middle-level students. So I think everybody knows at this point, we have a 6th grade, a 7th grade, and an 8th grade technology curriculum, happens to be PLTW at 7th and 8th, but that is to meet the state mandate. That's the state requirements. These courses are electives. They're above and beyond, and as you can see, they're courses that are designed as feeders to the high school. They connect to the kinds of courses that our students will have available to them as they move through their high school years. So for this year, our goal is to increase the opportunities for students and provide alternate options for study hall. So some of you might remember, maybe not, yeah, maybe, there was a point in time at the middle school where we had exploratories. And those exploratories were really to give kids the opportunity in art and music and computer to do something other than take and have a study hall. And I'll be honest with you, it's met with mixed emotions. There are parents who want children to have study halls. Me, as an educator, I think we should, our day should be filled with learning opportunities for kids. But right now, we live in both worlds, and so there still is study hall, so this is an opportunity for students. These are the three courses, and where our goal was, and we had to provide the training. So what we're looking at for this year is pretty simple. We're looking at the number of students taking advantage of one course or two courses, and we're going to be getting feedback from the students and teachers. Some of, our best feedback around this is, "Do our numbers increase?" But again, there is a variable there around people who, kids who want study hall and parents who want study hall, that I'm not sure completely whether we know if it's the course that kids aren't opting into, or because they want the study hall. So I think we'll have to, you know, that will be something we're going to have to suss out as we do this work. So moving ahead for next year, our goal is to not increase anything. Our goal is to put another year in place, provide those electives again, because also sometimes it takes time for something to catch on, right, to know the availability. It takes time to hear kids saying, "Oh, I took that, it was really good," or siblings, right? So sometimes it's not as simple as just, "Oh, it worked." We don't know if it worked right away. So we'll collect enrollment data for two years as well as assess student perception. Our goal though, in 2021, is now we're going to start to get our feedback from the high school. So what happened? Did our 8th graders this year, where are they now as 10th graders? What are they opting into? What courses are they signing up for? What are their interests, both in our science program, as well as our computer science program, as well as our engineering program? So in that third year is when we're going to start to get some answers. Did we provide the right feeder program for what we're offering at the high school?
I'll be interested to see if your science research numbers go up too.
Yes, I totally agree. And we talked about that, right, that that would be, that would be an indicator as well. So at the secondary level, where we continue to focus in our English department, I would say that because of the collective work our teachers have been doing with Bard, there is a renewed interest in really naming these mission and beliefs for graduating seniors in the area of English. And the English teachers have started to do that work, and as a result, they're working through with obviously Dave and Matt, this idea of selectives and electives. And what should be, what's a must-do for a student of English in high school, and what are those other opportunities? We're also going to spend time, at this point, every high school teacher except one will have taught the 9th grade writing program. And that's a good thing. Now we're finally ready, because they've all will have taught it, to redefine it. And we're going to spend some time, we know that we've gotten some good feedback on the interdisciplinary component of it, but we're actually going to be working with our Bard consultant, because it's a writing program and Bard is writing, is to really ensure that we're developing our 9th grade writing seminar. It is not an AIS class. It is not for struggling learners. Our kids should be the best writers they absolutely can be, and we need to be providing a 9th grade foundational course for them that set them up for their following three years of high school and into college. And there's no reason that we shouldn't be doing that at an incredibly high level. And I think that our goal this year is, through the articulation with the entire department, is to really redefine this, make sure we have clear articulation, and that no matter who the teacher is who's teaching it, everybody has a common set of goals and understanding of what the expectations are, and that the course is about doing, is writing and doing a lot of writing, so that our students are prepared. And we continue to support our teachers through the coaching model of Bard practices in the classroom. Areas of expansion that I just wanted to mention, obviously the PLTW, but also RTI, we continue to expand our RTI into 7th grade and using data to inform placement of students in terms of, into support services. So that's just work that, we just keep chugging along on that. So content area, professional development that focuses, that support, development that support our areas of focus. So there's a lot going on. We have, as I shared, our ELA work, our math work metamorphosis around thinking and developing the kind of thinking in math that goes beyond the numbers, but actually, again, builds on the conceptual understanding. Science, I talk more about, and social studies. World language, we are working, we are almost there, I want to say, in writing our curriculum at all levels, and we continue to work on the teaching of speaking as a primary focus. As you know, last year was our first year that we used the Apple assessment. We're looking forward to having now two years of data that really indicate where we are and our areas for growth. The one piece that I didn't touch on tonight though, that I want to just touch on is counseling. So this year, through the support of the Board of Education or community, we added a K-5 counselor. I don't think there is a person in, I would like to think in this country right now, who isn't aware of the mental health, the social, emotional, the growing needs of kids today, the level of anxiety, the stress. It's everywhere. As adults, we're stressed, as kids, we're stressed, our focus on security is just evidence of where so much energy goes these days, but it's the reality. So we were very appreciative to have gotten our K-5 counselor last year. We are now going to be working with also, I would say, a worldwide expert. She has, I have a phone call set up with her and Emily Coleman, our chair, and we're going to be developing our K-12 counseling program, our approach. What we need, what we need is a district, what we need at each individual level, where we're doing well, and where we need to grow. Where is our capacity as a school district? What can we do better? What can we do more of? How do we engage our parents and our community? And this is, it takes a community around this one. And so we're happy to have this opportunity, and that will be by June, we feel like we're going to have a plan in place that really says, "How do we move forward as a school district and say, 'Here is our K-12 counseling program.'" And so I know very often, we get very caught up with counseling in college, but there is a lot more to the standards. The counseling standards have this much about college and this much about what your program needs to look like to support kids as they come through your system, and as we prepare them to exit our district, whether that's for college or some other option. So we are, we're really excited about how our ability to move forward in this area. So how do we look forward to 1920? So as we're starting to think about budget and moving forward, what are some of the areas of focus? Our increased use of performance-based data, performance-based assessment, development of processes of looking at student work continues to be an area of focus. Continued development of common assessments, rubrics. So you can see, when I look at 1920, I feel like we will be moving at even a faster pace around assessment. We're doing it now, but I would say even faster. Use of assessments to differentiate our instruction, that K-12 counseling program. And over the course of this year, Jesse Lubinski and I will be developing, or engaging in dialogue with our elementary, middle, and high school around the idea of capstone projects. What do those look like? And what could they be? So how do we, how does all this happen? It really only happens through really good, solid professional development. That's how we have moved this district forward. Teaching thinking, learning sessions, those slides I just shared with you from a learning session, including data and analysis, learning session on alignment of planners, data for benchmark assessment, developing the knowledge and skill in those reading assessments, Iphantus and Pennell, looking at student work to inform thinking practice. One of the work that we're doing with our social studies department, 6th through 12, is they are looking at the enduring essay, the enduring idea essays that our students wrote last year, and they are analyzing those essays collectively. That is really important work to be doing. It's how we really know and understand what our kids can do, and then we analyze, "Well, why can they do this and why can't they do this?" So that gives us the window in. So that idea of looking at student work to inform thinking and practice is huge, as well as our expansion of Google Classroom and other technology tools. So there are lots of considerations, and I bet you're going to have a couple of questions to ask, but when we think about, so what is some of the things that I shared tonight, what are you thinking about as a board? Like Michael was really helpful in sort of framing, like, "How do we take all these presentations and put them in the context of the board?" So I would say, as I was thinking about this, I've thought about this idea of, "To what extent does the shift in approach and implementation of materials, including textbooks, shift Board of Ed policy and expectations?" You know, long gone are the days where you're approving a textbook. I hate to say it, but it's gone. And you know why it's gone? And you know why it's gone? Because so many resources we use now, you would be, you would have to be here every single day and night and I'd be, have to be sharing everything that gets printed off the internet or every, every resource a teacher gets at a workshop or, or every resource teachers develop on their own. This is a challenge. I don't have an answer. We've sat at policy committee, right? And it's, it's challenging. That policy is from like, you know, from 1899, you know? It really could be. It isn't relevant anymore. And so I don't know what your role is, but I think it is a worthy conversation for you to have as a board, for us to have collectively. I, I don't have a good answer anymore for this. To what extent does degree of detail related to curriculum and instruction inform your decision-making process? I gave you a window into this much of what happened today in our schools. This much. I don't know how to give you enough information. I, let me take it back. I want you to have enough information that when we are sitting here and we are doing this work together and we are looking at how are we moving? How are we growing? Where do we put the money? Because there's just so much money. But that's, but, because, but you know what? You saw this. You don't, I, I thank you, but you don't know what I chose not to share because I knew it was already going to be late. So I guess I share that with you as a consideration because I want you to feel informed. I want you to feel like you have the information you need to make good decisions. But I don't know always to what degree is helpful. We sometimes sit here at night at these presentations, they go on forever. And you seem to appreciate them, but I, I could have, that was 40 slides. I could have given you 80 slides. And still, maybe then I could have given you this much, not this much. So I share that because I think that that's also worthy of thought. Whether you, you know, whether there's an answer to it or not, I don't know. So voila, this is it. This was this one. We'll go from here.
When I say, think it to, from the voila to, to either that, that moment of silence or, you know, someone drops a mic sort of thing. You know, over the course of the years, we've outlined steps and progress. And to me, this looks like a culmination of work. And it see, to me, it's like there's shift because you talk about like pockets of work and we, you know, whether you divide into content area or a program or professional development, you see the alignment and how things have, have merged. But you're also starting to see lots of other initiatives fold into that, these different bodies of work. How many, you know, we've talked about data and where are we going with data? How many references did we see the data? The program assessment that, starting to answer that, how are we doing? And really, when we think about alignment and, and the communication that administration is having with the board, Raina's comments at the end and, and looking, we have two presentations in a row where we're starting to think about how do we frame work moving forward? How do we build our partnership to, to better align and support the work that happens day to day in the schools and what happens here in, in the, you know, boardroom? But Raina, really an impressive job. You know, when you, you say it could have been 80 slides, I think it's an understatement. It's the work of Raina, it's the work of our principals and importantly, it's the work of our teachers every single day. So kudos.
Someone, middle of the table, David, you're ready to jump in?
Actually, I just, I mean, that's a really great presentation.
Thanks.
Showed like feedback, response to feedback, you know, the other thing, you know, like really great, so I appreciate it very much. To the second question, you know, I, I think this is a great slide also because it wants us, it's like meaningful questions. And I think, I, this question isn't necessarily a question for you, it's just more of a thought in terms of how this work relates to our work. And I think about the budget period coming up and I think about, it's something, the example in this presentation, because again, this little, but the metamorphosis coaching, right? That's something that we as a board allocate funding for, approve funding for in the budget. You know, and I think about the, how it's, you know, wonderfully tied to the goals and all those things that, you know, do, do we see that work playing out in the math classrooms, right? So if Maria is a math teacher, Maria's attending the metamorphosis work, are you being held with expectations in your observation, the work that you do with the classroom with kids? Or are these, like you said, Raina, are you going back, you know, which we know is something that happens, especially up in the high school, like I'm sure that, you know, we've had discussions about four. It's just that, I think that's an important way that this presentation, who's into what our work as a board is.
Funny, because that's exactly what, that's, that's, that's the one that I had. The one that I actually picked up on, I like the examples that she selected in terms of science because those are all the new initiatives and those are the ones that we had the most questions on, so I thought they were perfectly selected. The one I always still wrestle with, understanding how it looks in the classroom and whether the program ties into the instructional changes you're looking for, or they further the instructional practices that the teacher after, does always go back to math for me, metamorphosis. So if I'm answering that, these questions in general, what would I, at least personally as a board member, like a greater understanding of? It would be math. And I always go to the secondary level as well because having the students right now in college that came through our school district, I still see the importance of math and the concepts they wrestle with, with math and how important math is. And I wonder how we're doing in math? Do we look at student performance data? Do we, we look at how we're doing on regions, AP scores? So for me, math and metamorphosis is really the program that I leave with questions about still and would look to for next year, if, if that's what you're asking. I love that you brought in the counseling program. I never think of it as curriculum, but I know like I've learned about athletics, that there's a, there's a curriculum piece to that. I'm happy to see that the program is one that's going to be a new initiative. The learning sessions, I like that you brought that up. I, I would, I think that professional development is the commitment of this board. It's a shift, if you will, that we've, we've kind of grown with you in and making not only time but money allocated towards it. So learning more about learning sessions and really a specific example you got was the highlight for me tonight, to know that that's how it sounds and plays out because I didn't understand how you take one of these professionals, put them in with a group of teachers, and then how do you take a test score and connect back to it? Because I know as a parent, we try to do that, especially when you get to the secondary level with exams, you're looking at specific questions, like wow, they missed that whole section, was that even taught in the classroom? But obviously you guys are putting up behind this, you know, younger level as well. But no, I thought, I thought it was really, thank you very much. It was, it was not, as usual, when we come to these presentations before we get the actual report ahead of time, when you talk about curriculum development and planning, I do think of curriculum cycles because that's the old school and that's what I walked into thinking we were going to get a presentation on. This is the curriculum, we cycled back and we look at it and then we change our unit planner. But it, it sounds now after this presentation that we're moving away from that. And I do like the fact that we're talking more about PD, especially in light of all these changes in standards that you highlighted.
I think the one thing I would just add there, Deb, I'm glad you said that, is what our goal now is though, is because of these unit planners, we're going to be able to do that articulation on more, on an ongoing, more flu, with more fluidity. So in other words, if I'm a ninth grade teacher, I want to be able to go to someone's planner or run a report and see if those science standards were taught. So it doesn't mean that we all have to have all the K-12 teachers in the room and we have to have a whole big discussion because it's available. Because we never had anything written down, it was really important. Every curriculum review cycle would start the same way. There's a ton of poster paper. What do you do? What do you do? What do you, and we would have the rooms, right? Covered in paper of what do you do? What do you do? And then it was paper. And then like Connie in my office would type up, this is what you do. It was like, it's insane. So I think we're still going to be able to do that, but I think we're going to be able to do it a little bit more efficiently. Like when Nancy had that slide, how do we work smarter? I think it's giving us the ability to also work a little smarter.
And my last comment is in terms of, to answer your questions, the ninth grade writing program is the other one you touched on. I wasn't on the board when that, I think you were Maria, when that was presented as something that was going to be again, a shift and, and approach that was going to be. That's something I would like to go back and look at again, like how do, how do the teachers feel now that we've got virtually all of them having taught the course? What has come out of it? I know having had students that have gone through the program, what comes out of it? But where do we go with it to more of a celebration of writing?
Yeah.
Getting examples of the work that comes out of that program, to learn more about.
Sure, I think that's a great idea. And I'm hoping that because of the articulation we're going to be doing with the whole department around the writing program and this collective belief in it, which I'll be honest with you, I don't think we had a, we didn't have a collective belief three years ago. What we had were two teachers who had been teaching, you know, Jen and Jen had been teaching, they'd been in eighth grade, they had been teaching writing, you know, they strongly, and Kim O'Connor actually. But I think the pros and cons of different teachers teaching it each year, some cons are that now it, it, it doesn't have the stability because the teachers keep, kept changing. But it's really going to work to our benefit because now that everyone has a sense of it and knows it, I think we're going to be able to redefine it better. So it was an evolution. Nothing gets rolled out in his right, right from the beginning. And if anyone wants to think it's going to be that way, I, I'll never tell you it's going to be that. It never is.
There was a lot of resistance. And I know having high school students, there was resistance from the students to.
Absolutely.
Right. But I don't, I think now that you've had enough years under your belt, I'm not hearing that anymore.
Yeah. Change.
Should we keep coming, do we hop to the end?
Hi. Oh, not hi, hello. Hi. No, I, I had a question. I wanted to go back to the Nancy Deacon presentation. What is a constructed response? If that was the piece that you were pulling out to, to work on?
It's the long part of the ELA test. It's where the kids are given, it, it's where the kids have to take, they read something and they write.
Okay. And would you say that that would be similar to what you would ask in your own curriculum? Because I know in your math curriculum, certainly you have standardized assessments that exist during the year, that parallel an assessment that's given as a summative assessment, forgive the issue of the timing and all. But how does that compare to what? Because in, in the presentation, I know that many of the board members were very happy with that part, but you know a little bit about my history and my concerns about that specific standardized test.
Right. So here's what we should be doing. We should be, if it were up to me, I'd throw away every coach book in the world. Like I don't think we should be giving kids a book right before the assessment and then practicing and practicing and practicing. I don't think that's good.
Right. Because you yourself said, if we're doing a good job teaching, they will do well on the test, but that's our curriculum.
Well, it's not just our curriculum, it's our practices. So I want to be careful. So when we talk about the curriculum, so if I go back to that slide, I highlight for you what curriculum is and what instruction is. So we need to balance those two things. So for me, with constructed response or writing, I'm just going to say writing.
So it was a writing part of the test?
Writing. It's constructed response, that's what it is. You read and you write. And what we see is that our kids are not having enough experiences doing that.
Like writing under pressure?
Right. And writing, and I would call it on demand. And in other words, it doesn't have to be, you know, 17 pages long writing, but that idea of reading something and then writing and then thinking about what you've read and pulling together your thinking and be able, and being able to write.
So the Fontis and Pennell curriculum, which includes assessments, that's a reading assessment, not a writing.
Fontis and Pennell is just an assessment.
Okay.
It's ju, that is the assessment.
Okay.
And through that assessment, it helps me to understand where my students are as readers.
Readers versus readers.
And then it helps me in terms of leveling. We're cautious how we're using that language because what we don't, we don't want to promote is a child walking around saying, I'm an M.
Right. And then only providing them with M and below.
That's not.
Yeah, I understand, that's not done here.
That's not it. But it does help us to understand the range. It also helps us to assess students as deep readers. So I will tell you from my own experience, and I see it still continues a little bit, that sometimes a kid walks in with their book from home and it's like this thick and everybody's proud, you know, oh, I'm reading a book this thick. And the kid's not really reading it deeply. And everybody's so happy that, you know, it's like, my kid's a great reader. Really? Well, your kid is probably a good reader. I'm not questioning that. But why don't we use our Fontis and Pennell assessment to see the depth of understanding? Because that's what we want to measure. We would rather kids read books this thick, but understand them deeply. So Fontis and Pennell gives us a way in to understand who a child is as a reader.
Okay. Then I have a couple of other questions. So I agree with Deb, it's very exciting to hear about the K through 12 counseling program. But you know, we're all aware of the, about the New York State requirements about curriculum. Does that actually fold into the curriculum? Is that the purpose?
So for next year, you know, we're supposed to have a curriculum in place.
Right.
So yes. So right now, Alyssa Kane is our K-5 counselor and she's going in and she's working with each, with the administrators in each building and she's doing lessons based on, through the guidance of the building principals, based on their initiatives in their schools.
Okay.
I have held her at bay not to go too far because I want her to be part of, I want what she does to be part of a K-5 system. So it, we are going to be working with the new standards with this expert and developing something that.
And would that go into health curriculum for six through 12? I mean, how would you bring it in?
Yes.
It's a K through 12 requirement.
Definitely go into the health curriculum, but I don't know that it will, I, we're not going to unfold a new curriculum next September. Let me just be cautious about that. We will use this year to develop it, we'll make some changes for next year. And I would, I would suspect that it will be 2021 that will be completely rolled out in our system.
Okay. And then just one last question. So on Amplify for K through two, the piece with the one-to-one technology that's only in our middle school.
Only middle school.
So the only technology that's currently required by curriculum for K through two is the piece about computer science and PLTW.
Yes. So there is, so in each one of these units, there is a strong, there is a strong, a well, strong, a well-developed resource online, but it is mostly for the teacher in K-5. They have done an amazing job. They, they have produced beautiful texts. I mean, every K-1 teacher has big books from Amplify. So there is no expectation that kids are in Amplify K-5. It is, they use hard, they use those tangible materials and they touch them.
So I think, because this was earlier in the presentation, I don't think the expression is replacing instruction, it's more about replacing textbooks. Because technology wouldn't replace instruction.
Did I say replace instruction? I meant replace, I meant replace textbooks.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
So sorry, I wasn't ready.
I'm sorry, I wasn't even looking at you.
We can, we can circle around and come back to you, absolutely.
Do you want to go?
Okay.
How you ended this presentation? To what degree of detail do we need to know as board members? I guess for me, it always goes back to the budget and being fiscally responsible and making sure that, you know, our monies are being allocated smartly and we're getting the bang for our buck. So for me, what I loved about this presentation is there are new initiatives or even old initiatives. And like you said, we've gotten a window this big into what really goes on. But for me, it's that evidence, and that evidence, I say that, I use that word because it looks differently for different initiatives. For me, it's the evidence that it's working or possibly not working and what steps you guys are taking to, to change it, to make it work or, you know, change direction. But for me, that's what it always comes back to. And I think you've answered or at least given us a window into a lot of things. You use the example of metamorphosis, but, and I said that wrong, sorry. Well, I almost, I stopped myself. But to me also, that other question is also the Bard PD because both of those initiatives are, are costly. And I was really happy to hear about the reflection and the work that you're going to be doing to the writing program because I was on the board when we started that. And we, I did think of it one way when it was added. And now my, my thought and my philosophy about that class and that program has shifted. And I think because times, I don't, back then I didn't envision a lot of things that we're doing now that we had to do, right? Things change. It's, education is constantly changing. Which is why I think, you know, like you referred earlier, you know, textbooks, they're outdated after probably one or two years, right?
What are there other resources that are equally as valuable?
Right. So to me, presentations like this, information, you know, reports, that is to me what I need or, and I think, you know, a lot of us need or look for to help us inform our decisions going forward and even reflecting back. Because I mean, except for possibly one board member on this board, I am not an educator. Because, I mean, except for possibly one board member on this board, I am not an educator. So I truly rely on your expertise to pick the programs or, you know, make certain decisions, educational decisions, because that's not our expertise.
And, you know, I think one of the things, thank you, Maria, for saying that, but I think one of the things that I just want to connect to what you said is about, you know, for me, I probably say at least three times a week, trust the process. I am a process person and I believe in it. And I believe, so sometimes I don't have exactly where we're going. But here's what I could tell you about Bard. And here's the challenge for you, I think, as a board. Sometimes it seems like we should be equating Bard to English. So because of Bard, our classroom practices are better. But there are byproducts that happen as a result of professional learning that are sometimes equally as powerful and maybe more important. And it goes back to that slide I showed you that Nancy Deacon created about the ongoing dialogue of our practice. Our English teachers are talking all the time now and they're starting to talk a common language because of Bard. So I may or may not be able to show you enough evidence of what might feel like change to you. But a good professional learning community is talking. So as a result of finding Bard and our English teachers have such respect for the work, they are building their capacity, respect for each other, the same way I shared about the Fuentes and Pennell and giving enough training so that I trust the teacher who did that diagnostic in June, so in September I trust that. Well, the same thing I'd say at the secondary, increased dialogue between middle school and high school. So sometimes I don't always have the measure that seems like the obvious measure to you, which is to say, "Well, if Bard practices are doing such, making a difference, show me reign of that paper." Well, I want to be able to show you that as well, but I never want you to lose sight of how important in education the ongoing articulation and dialogue and belief of practices informs and creates the cohesiveness for your children. And that's probably, when I look at this work over the seven years, that is probably the greatest gift of the work we've invested in, in these seven years, is the people, and Jessie said it two weeks ago, when Holly came to visit, came to take Teaching Thinking, she said, "Your teachers are talking in ways that doesn't happen everywhere." That is powerful.
And I just want to add that when I say seen evidence, I don't necessarily mean an assessment.
No, 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 I knew what you meant. Right. I was just adding on to what you were saying.
You know, you've used, you know, phrases like Bard practices, moving certain things along, like even the instructional coach and seeing like an exercise that she does with the teachers and what came out of it.
Right.
I mean, to me, that is showing me as a board member, evidence as to adding that position, the, a benefit of...
Exactly.
Of that monies that is spent, you know? So I guess I just want to make sure I don't mean assessments.
I was, I was, I was adding on to what you were saying. I was trying to say that there are intangibles.
For an uneducated, that's not so bad. I just wanted to follow up on that if I may.
Well, but you have some other board members on this board.
Okay.
Write it down.
I mean, it's very quick just because it's really important, I think, to stress that, like, in terms of those questions, and that second question in particular, you know, it's, I would need a better answer than, I just don't have the data. Like, you've referred to qualitative data before. Like, there's a way to present that qualitative data so that a decision can be, so that, because if student achievement is our number one responsibility, right? And if we want to fund a program, you know, and believe in that concept of the program, there has to be some data point that we can look at.
So here's where I'm going to push. What I am looking and what I am trying to do is I am trying to show you evidence of the body of work that I do. And when, so I started this by saying, at times, I am saying to you, I am asking you to trust the process.
You do, but...
No, 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 I'm not, I know you're not saying, but when I...
Bard's been around a long time.
Well, no, it actually hasn't.
Five years?
No.
Four years? Definitely four because they were here before I got on the board.
Two full years.
Two full years.
Two full years? So they weren't here before I came on the school board?
Did they come in?
They may have done one thing. They're only, they're here...
They've been present in the district for a minute. They were here before I got on the board. And I'm only, this is my third year. So...
I'm not going to debate it, but I don't know.
I agree, like, in the beginning, with what you're saying, but I do trust, not about distrust. It's about, it's not just this group of people.
But Dave, I'm not telling you that I'm not going to give you, I'm hap, I said to Maria, I'm happy to provide it. All right, I'm going to, okay. Thank you, Michael, because now it's like, okay, go ahead.
You know, there is a phrase in there in terms of the practice by faculty of, you know, better not more or harder.
Yeah.
And I think smarter.
Not harder.
Work smarter.
No, work harder? No, I don't know. Whatever. I think we're, yeah.
Work smarter, not harder.
Work smarter, not harder. And I think there's a lot of evidence in this presentation that as a district, that's what's happening. And I think, you know, as I like to do, sometimes and often, maybe often unsuccessfully, is to bring your two comments together. As I, you know, you were showing program assessment in different areas and I think, I think at least for some trustees, maybe for multiple, we'd love to see that applied to Bard or metamorphosis. So it's not, it's not giving us a specific, you know, A or B or L or whatever, you know, outcome. But it is, you know, in the examples you gave, what is the feedback of teachers, what is the feedback, you know, what are the ways in which we can speak to that work? And that may be an opportunity for that that would help us in understanding.
But I just want, like, that's great and I totally agree, but I think, this is how I was trained, this is where my background comes into place, that those questions are great, but after that question is, so how about the students? Right? Like, so evidence of teachers, and I think Raina, that's a very good example, right, of asking better questions or, right, and those are qualitative data points. But the second question after that is, how is this investment affecting student achievement, student writing outcomes? Right? And, you know, and I think, Beth, to go back, one of those ways is at least, you know, is on the constructed responses.
Right.
Those are essays that are reasonably, you know...
Well, I mean, that's where I would go as well, is that, you know, the slides that you showed of the work with Nancy Deacon, I think were very powerful for us because it shows the loop that's occurring. And I think in, you know, in revealing that, that's maybe, whether it's ready now or at a later time, is a way to speak to, again...
I think we come back to, it was one of the first slides, when Raina had spoke to the list, right? And it was what could fit on one slide and there probably could have been four or five more slides. You're seeing that transition, how we're building in, the data shifts, and we've been talking about culture, right? And where Raina said, kind of, trust the process, you've heard me say it many times, it takes us time to build that data culture. If you go back a year ago, two years ago, how different would a presentation like this may have been in watching the use of data, feedback, and watch that mature? So there's pieces that happen there. When you talk about the elementary ELA example, we're talking about something that also ends in a standardized test. We're talking about a different type of writing, different types of programs that aren't ending up in the same types of assessments. So we have to be careful, the product is going to look and feel different. And some of the assessment information we're going to get back can come from teachers. You know, the work that Raina's talking about within our curriculum design is that we're in that assessment phase, right? And working and building more assessments, more consistent aligned assessments. So there's going to be opportunities to look for that because that's where the work is.
That's...
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, we're on that path.
When I look at, right, when I look at that second question, that's how, that's the thing.
Yeah. You know, I think this is the second presentation in a row, even more powerfully this time around, perhaps, or explicitly, about the power of the coaching model to work with the use of data is the effective model for us, rather than having a data person to have that, these people utilize that as a part of what their work is. Really making that impact in terms of my understanding of it. You spoke about the regions. Is there sometime this year, you're planning to share with us some feedback about changes to what regions are given here?
Yeah. So I'm going to say, hopefully, like, right after the holiday break, the winter break, Dave, Matt and I met the other day, we went through it again. You know, it's a little complicated, the shifting to the five mandated regions because you have to make sure that you're offering, you have to make sure you're offering certain regions and you have to make sure that you're working through which regions make the most sense. So that's where we are, so that we can share with the board a recommendation for what we think makes the most sense. And it's a little, it is, it's a little complicated to do. So we work through, also, when we present, when we share with you our recommendation, we also want to share with you a rollout plan because you also need to make sure that you're taking into consideration, obviously, if I'm a junior and I'm taking, you know, like, you want to make sure that you're phasing it in or phasing them out, whichever way you want to make it, you want to say it. So, yeah, so I think we have one more meeting and I think we'll be ready to sort of make a recommendation. Get your feedback. Certainly, your questions will be helpful. You know, I think you'll think of things very differently than we do when it comes to that.
And I think going forward, you raised the question about, you know, we're done with textbooks, how do we deal with the selection of materials? I think as we shift in culture, as we shift in thinking, there are ways that we can get there. It's probably bigger than just our district, but I would hope to see something developing. It feels like a great business opportunity for somebody out there to create a social model that would help with the...
That's what Amplify did.
And then change board policies accordingly. Because one thing I think of is when I served on the board policy committee my first term, we were reviewing the smoking policy on campus. And Michael just shared with us a video of the school from 1977.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. And in the quad, he are outside, they're smoking in the quad. So it just, you know, times change and we need to change our policies accordingly. So we need to make sure that's updated as well.
Go ahead.
So back to backaways, I fear, going to dial back to the question of Bard and how that's changed practices. And I want to preface this by saying, I understand you needed to be, to show us that small window and there is so much more right now, I think, to say about what needs to happen for social studies, for sciences, for Project Lead the Way. But I didn't hear anything about middle school ELA specifically. And I don't know if there's any way to link that into what you said about the high school that would, that would help those of us who haven't even gotten through it to get an understanding of what's changing or where the goals are.
Yeah. And so just to be, just to be clear, so Bard is six twelve. And I think that we certainly can provide a window in, we could talk about where that window might come from, whether that be through roundtable conversation, maybe a little bit, you know, in whenever, if we're doing that and when we're doing that.
However that looks.
However that looks. So that might be a way to, you know, gather some of that information.
And the other question was, again, this, I may not fully understand the way regions' material is delivered, but if you change to the five mandated regions, do you end up with certain classes being overcrowded or with there being sort of different delivery needs to happen?
No, I mean, it would be, I mean, I guess I would give, I'll give you an example. It is likely that we will propose that bio be the science regions. Why? Because every ninth, you know, pretty much, it's a universal course. So when you pick your regions, you want to pick the courses that are pretty much universal courses that every kid is going to take. Not every kid would take the chem regions, that's a good example, I think. So we're trying to be practical about which regions and what will be the, because every child, every student needs at least one region, so why not have in a course that all kids take? We're not there yet in that recommendation, but that's sort of some of the thinking behind it.
And doesn't it, it has to be like a living science?
So, so it has, a science, it has to be a science regions. So it could have been earth sci, it could be earth science, it could be bio. Thank you.
And I appreciate that you're doing the, you know, assessment analysis of the professional learning time and, you know, hopefully we'll see some, see that analysis and some suggestions as we get to that period in the budget and calendar.
Yep.
Because as, as Deb was saying, I think you have a board that really supports the work, seeks to better understand it and seeks to, how we can support. If there's anything that, you know, that I have a frustration is how can we, you know, just support it being implemented on a faster clip?
Yeah.
Because, you know, my kids are almost done. I keep waiting, like, why can't we circle back and do another loop?
There's just not enough hours in the day. That's, 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 that is truly it. There's just not enough, we are going as fast as we possibly can.
I guess I, I got pushed back on that a little bit. Assessment, we've been dipping the toe for two years.
All right.
A long time. I do get it, I mean, like, God...
If I could move faster, I would.
Well, it's not you.
If anyone can.
The idea that the assessment is such a huge lynch...
And we're assessing. And we're assessing, we're not assessing kids.
But you cited ten hours of the PLRD. Is it more time? I mean, how can we help, how can we as a board help?
I don't think it's more, I think what Raina talked about before, you talked about the depth of dialogue and the types of conversations that are happening in the district.
Right, there's cultures shift happen.
There's a progression and this is a different place because of this body of work. And steps one through ten has to happen before you get through eleven, eleven to twelve. So we're assessing kids, but what we want to do is we want to assess kids well, we just don't want to evaluate and just get numbers on paper. We want it to be, and you want it to be meaningful. Okay. So...
Maybe I get the last words since I haven't had a chance.
Oh, Beth also had a question. Just quickly, I mean, I would just like to ask this question from an assessment viewpoint. I know that from your technology presentation, we learned that now many of the ELA teachers are able to use these sort of online rubrics so that when the kids are older, we're not talking about the fourth grade kids now, we're talking about middle school and up, they're responding, they're doing an essay assignment, it could possibly be horizontally aligned. And the teachers are actually in real time commenting on the rubric. And then there's like a response and then eventually you get, let's say, your third draft, let's say that's final. Would that count as an assessment? I'm just asking for the purpose of the board generally. So it seems that that's going on.
I guess I shared throughout my presentation, multiple assessments. I shared the benchmark assessments, I shared the work of the entire social studies department looking at student work around and during issue essays. They are evaluating and unpacking essays. So I guess this idea that we're not doing assessment is not accurate.
It's definitely not a neat little dashboard for the board to look at.
Yeah, exactly. The vocabulary is different among them.
Yeah.
And I want to say, and Dave, and I'm going to go back and forth, but it's just that we just don't want to think about achievement too, right? There's growth, there's other factors there too, because...
I think all of those, all the above. Thank you. You're right. All the above.
Mr. Freeman. Saw you, Brian.
Thank you. Very interesting, very informative. And I guess maybe I'll try to answer your last question, because that's the only things that, you know, I've been talking about. And the Nancy Deacon example that you presented is exactly what I've always envisioned in terms of data and how we connect it to how our students have performed previously and how we can move their learning forward. So I think, you know, that example, I think, it crystallizes, at least in my view, you know, the value of data and how we can use data. And I guess in terms of answering your question, it's, where do we see more of that and what resources do we need to devote to have more of that? For me, I don't need the detail of every single experience. I think the Nancy Deacon example is a great window into it. And I guess the question is, from a board, how do we allow more of that to happen? And what is the timeframe for us to be positioned from both a data collection standpoint and a resources standpoint to enable more of that work to be done? So, you know, I think, you know, that's my point and question, I think, for all of us to be thinking about in terms of how we're building out our capacities going forward.
And some of that you'll hear through this whole long-range planning piece that, you know, we've been doing.
I think that you, in terms of from the board, the trust in the process is having is having the examples that you were using tonight with, with the Nancy Deacon's example with the program assessment model. Those, those say, hey, there, there's a process in place that, that is, you know, looking forward, is, is, you know, assessing, you know, it's, it's a, it's a thought-out process, and that, that helps develop the confidence that, you know, things are headed in the right direction in terms of what our aims are. So with that, I.
And I, I just do want to follow one way, because I want to be clear also, that data doesn't just mean a CR response score, it does mean observational data. It's the full range of the data that you can, you know, bring back to us. So I, I want people, you know, to think that it's only a score in this.
Right.
It is data in whatever format we have it that will be most useful in evaluating what we are looking at.
But also, like, using the example of the electives, the three electives being offered at the middle school, for example, it's also experiences. So, I mean, I'm in the same boat as you. You have a study hall, that's what you come home and do homework for, or, you know, you have time at home to do that. If you're in class, you know, I, if you're in school, having a choice of taking a class or a study hall, I would have my children out for the class. So it's also giving the kids an opportunity, but I also appreciate your comments about having the student feedback, having the teacher feedback, and evaluating those classes, because it is not, you know, and also connecting it to the high school offerings and seeing if there's an increase there as well. So there's a lot of pieces that are interconnected, and I found the, overall, the presentation very thoughtful from a variety of ways.
Good, thanks.
But I also want, and, you know, I numbered this year, forty-seven kids in eighth grade taking it, what that looks like in years going forward. And that is also, you know.
No, that's Dave.
Part of the budget, right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And do we need to offer something else?
Right.
Or is what we're offering the right offering?
Right. But at least it's, it's, it's a start, right? Just to clarify, the eighth grade offerings of those classes, kids who are in earth science, they can't because they have the half-period plan, correct?
Right. It does exclude.
It excludes the kids.
It excludes, i- i- if, if your child wasn't going to have a study hall, your child can't take that class.
Right, right.
Basically.
So it excludes the study hall kids. So saying forty-seven, it's, of the entire, I just wanted to make that clear for the whole board, not the entire grade.
Has access to.
Has access to that.
That's right, right.
So, you know, it looks different.
Right. And David and I talked briefly about seven, you know, seventh grade has took down. So David and I also talked about, so I didn't put that up there because it's not, you know, a formalized thought, but we even did sort of toss around that idea, well, maybe, you know, maybe that should be something that's also open to seven. Scheduling is a little more complicated, but that's a different issue.
You know, and to tag onto that, the, you know, one of the questions I've been asking every year is, you know, the, the participation in terms of those STEM programs, and, and you showed a shift, but I would expect, and you suggested that that shift, you believe, will happen in terms of there being more of a gender balance in, in those classes. So it'll be interesting to see over the next few years.
Yeah.
So we do have opportunity, if there are audience members who have a question. I, in doing so, I also want to just put out there, I mean, one thing that the board, and I believe community members are interested to learn about is, you know, with the, the big shift in the, the high school master schedule that's being proposed, the work that'll be done. With that, I, I think we're leaving the floor to David Cohen and the expert.
Mike Reddick.
Mike Reddick, and, and also some teachers as well, come December eleventh, yeah. So, okay. If, if anyone would like to ask a question regarding this presentation, you're welcome to. If you could go to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hello?
Because this is recorded, so it gives opportunity, people listen afterwards.
Okay. I'm Pamela Haynes. I have a question about how the assessments can poss, that, that were mentioned can be more transparent, because they're taking time, which, you know, is understandable, but how can they be more transparent for either the board or the parents? Like, what does it look like when they're assessed?
Give an example, maybe one assessment.
Well, I have a child, and I can give a great assessment, probably. So how are these, like, what does it look like these were assessing the students? And sorry, that's a naive question, because I'm new to this situation.
So maybe as an example, like Dr. Core referenced, Fontes and Pennell, are you saying, how does it, how do you understand, like, what that experience is for children?
Well, I guess the assessments regarding the Bard is what I was referring to, how it takes time to assess these processes. And we have to trust the process, which makes sense, but how do we see the process as it's playing out, rather than just wait?
Can I, can I reframe, can I just try to reframe it? So, because assessment can be a lot of different things, but you're talking specifically, we're giving examples of, of programs of professional development, that, that there's a balance of teachers sometimes being pulled from, from classrooms and learning, and there's also the, the coaches coming into classrooms, and.
Right. So I guess.
How do we understand their?
So I guess I just want to clarify, when I, when I said trust the process, what I meant by that is, that I think for at least the last three years, I have been showing you presentations that show the evolution and the belief in using data.
Yes.
And using evidence. So what I guess I meant was, it's not that I don't want to provide you with that evidence, I do want to provide you with that evidence. My trust the process was saying, I will get there. But I am, but you, so, I really was saying, trust me, to say, I hear you, I believe it, we are on the same page. There needs to be evidence. But my reaction is sometimes that I keep showing you how we're building it, and so I'm saying, trust me, I'm with you. I do want to show you that evidence, but I can't necessarily show you that evidence yet. So one way that I, I think that is going to be evidence, and it's not going to be necessarily evidence of student work yet, the revision of the ninth grade writing program is evidence. It is evidence of how, as a result of this work, we are going to design and develop a better course. We couldn't have done that three years ago, for a variety of reasons. But now we're saying that we believe in these board practices because they ultimately are linked to thinking and engaging kids in lots and lots and lots of writing. And all the research tells you the same thing. You want to be a better writer, write. Teacher can do mini lessons all day long. If kids aren't writing, their writing doesn't improve. So the, the whole, the whole gestalt of board writing is that kids should be doing a lot of writing, both free writing, targeted writing, directed writing, on-demand writing, longer writing, shorter writing. So that's the premise behind it. So the fact that we're at a place where we are now going to arc our ninth grade writing course, which I knew was a good idea, but it's really going to get developed more deeply now because the English teachers believe in this writing, believe in this practice, and are seeing, they are seeing kids being as stronger writers. And I'll tell you, not just stronger writers, more engaged writers. And level of engagement in writing, especially when you get to the secondary level, is a really strong measure, because kids start to disengage. They, you know, they, they write, they've determined, I don't really like to write, or I don't, you know, so engagement of writing has increased. And I see it, I see it in classrooms. So eventually, what we're going to do is, we're going to be able to give you evidence of that. I would also like to be able to link it to this crossover of these enduring essays, these enduring issue essays in, in social studies, because some of you might have experienced a social studies teacher who, I think our social studies teachers in general are, are, many of them are very strong teachers of writing, but now we're going to have some of that crossover. So right now, can I produce evidence that would say to you, this is what students were doing, this is what they're doing now? I guess we could work on providing you with a presentation that would show you growth over time of student work. So yeah, that's why I'm saying, we can think about a way to present that information to you, but.
And as you ended your presentation, you can't show us everything, but I think we, we, we find alignment in terms of what areas do we want to highlight in any given year. I think there's, you know, growing interest when it comes to Bard or Metamorphosis.
Or Ma, yeah, Metamorphosis as well.
But I mean, another thing I would say, just pulling from a number of presentations over the last few years, is that, you know, there's, there's a different step sort of identifying a, a program. And in one way that that's shifting is working with the program assessment model now too, to, to sort of outline what are the goals, what's the implementation, and how do you assess that success? So that's what, so that was one example in terms of what you're asking. And, and what we see is, you know, so then it's, yeah, how do we, what are we buying? What, you know, how do we support the teachers in understanding how to give that instruction? And then, you know, the next piece is, is, you know, just, there's evolution of, of how it works. And that example was a ninth grade writing program. But you also, you know, in, in other examples that you've shared with us, it eventually translates into the student work, which is what you were just pointing out, so.
The working point of evidence.
I've never satisfied, because it, it's, everything takes longer than, than.
I know.
Outside of, you know, being a non educator, you hope it could just happen, but it takes a, it's a multi-year process.
And maybe someone could do it faster? I can't.
Right.
I can't. I'm not going to tell you I can.
Well, I mean, you know, that's what I was wondering, like, if one hour's not enough, is two hours better, you know?
I don't know. I'm seeing.
It's hours and, and it's people, and it's.
But there's big shifts too, that, that, that over time, you know, if you, the technology presentation was a great example last month, in which, where you look where we were with, with what we're doing with instruction, the number of classes available, the, the technology products available for students to use. I mean, it's a huge shift over four years.
Huge.
And, you know, similarly, when we talk about the curriculum planning, that, that, you know, the, the teachers, I mean, one of the ways in which if you're going to see shifts is that they're working together, and that's something that's, that shifted dramatically over the last number of years, in terms of a lot more collaboration happening. And so then you get the, you, you still use their talents, but they're working together to, to, you know, look at what their curriculum is, you know, across the grade and between grades, that there's that communication happening between schools. So it presents itself in many different ways.
Yeah. It's hard, it's hard work.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. And we have a short consent agenda. I think that's probably why Carol wasn't here tonight, so she didn't have to see what it is. But can I get a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Brian and Maria.
Brian and Maria, thank you. Any questions related to our short consent agenda? Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
So our, I, there is on our agenda, another opportunity for community comment, if anybody would like to join once twice. Our next, what's that?
Yes.
Yeah, we are at eight, if you would like to speak. So if you could just share a name and speak into the microphone at the back, and ideally keep your comments, your questions to the person. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Leah McGlock. As you know, many students, parents, and others in our community are very concerned about the proposed change to a block drop schedule on our high school. Tonight, I wish to focus on two issues from the IU FSD Governance Handbook and District Goals. The first is the responsibility to achieve the district's goals through evidence-based outcomes. Quite frankly, from what I've been able to see, the peer-reviewed evidence has shown the outcomes of block scheduling to be rather disappointing. Often lower SAT, ACT, and AP scores, and lower grades in many classes result. And so I ask the board to seek out and consider the evidence on block scheduling that they can find for themselves. The second is the responsibility to oversee an effective community relations program, and to increase community engagement that can inform decision-making. Again, quite frankly, outreach on this topic has been almost nonexistent. Until last month, our community was largely unaware that the proposed scheduling and curriculum changes are so drastic. And so I ask the board to ensure information about the proposal going forward is widely and effectively communicated. And lastly, and ideally, I ask the board to delay implementation to the 2020 school year, so that an engaged community can actually inform your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGlock. And I'd just say, there have been a few other community members who have come forward with similar comments, and it was acknowledged that communication over, that there was a gap, and there have been more recent communications from David Cohen in a presentation on December 11th. So we looked at that to sort, in part to also answer your, your, your first point about the, the evidence related to, to block scheduling. That would certainly be an opportunity to, to pose those kinds of questions and look to hear from the presenters on that day, and noted in terms of your suggestion about the timing of the schedule. So thank you. Okay. Given that, we will now note, do we, I guess we, we have no post. So our next meeting is Tuesday, December 4th, at 7:30. And thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Second.
Okay, David first, that's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.